Holly.
Here.
Holly, here. Farnwell.
Here.
Farnwell, here. Ossling.
Here.
Ossling, here. Thompson.
Here.
Thompson, here. Carr.
Here.
Carr, here. Pittman.
Here.
Pittman, here. Slattery.
Here.
Slattery, here. Pullos. Pullos, absent. Johnson. Johnson, absent. Frosto.
Here.
Frosto, here. Vellato.
Here.
Vellato, here. Vieira.
Here.
Vieira, here. Rita.
Here.
Rita, here. Donahue.
Here.
Donahue, here. Paul.
Thank you, sir. Next we move to the presentation of the proceedings. We need a motion to approve the city council minutes to the date of August 8th, 2017. I have a motion, Alderman Carr. Do I have a second, Alderman? Donahue, any questions? Roco, please.
Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farnwell.
Aye.
Farnwell, aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye. Vellato.
Aye.
Vellato, aye. Vieira.
Aye.
Vieira, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Twelve ayes.
Thank you very much.
You are all welcome to tonight's meeting. You are politely reminded the purpose of the meeting is for the deliberation by the city council and the mayor regarding city governance and business. If you intend to speak, please once recognized by the mayor, approach the podium, announce your name and address. Please be further advised. Comments may be limited to three minutes, according to the appropriate city personnel for individualized response.
Thank you very much, council. Mr. Roscoe.
I'm Rachelle Roscoe. I live at 11957 South Long Island. I've been trying to get over this, but I can't. About a month ago, it was a business in Blue Island, and the city council voted that this guy get a discount on his taxes for 10 years. You know, I have my house, plus my son, on my house here. Our taxes is like $6,000 to $8,000, and still over $6,000 with a tax break. How could you give a business 10-year tax break? You know, when Palocchio left here, one of the things I asked, I said, "I don't want the players to change. I want the game to change." You know, I am disappointed that you represent us. We trust you, but then you make decisions that's against the city. How is that going to help us? He had two employees of Blue Island. I got neighbors losing their homes. You know, when are you going to start representing us? You know, I don't know how some of you sleep at night. Sometime I think you got a price tag on your integrity, and it's not backing us up. What's going on? You know, that's all I got to say. I'm just very disappointed. Well, every time a business come here, it's better to help them than look out for the system. You had no problem about increasing fees for us. You had no problem about increasing the taxes for us. When do you, you represent us. You're our neighbors. You're not somebody from another city. When are you going to start representing the people? I'm just tired of it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Roscoe. Anyone else? Lehman, address please.
Good evening. My name is Rebecca Rains. My address is the Center for Neighborhood Technology and Rain Ready Program. And I am here because we did complete a plan for the city of Blue Island back in March. And I'm just trying to find out if any progress has been made about adopting that plan as a part of the way that the city is going to move forward as they look at their stormwater issues. I recently found that Jason Berry has left the city of Blue Island. He was my contact, and so I don't have another person to directly contact in that regard.
You can direct all your comments or concerns to my office, and then you will be addressing that within the very near future.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Moving on. Regarding mayor's announcements, let me just mention this, if the aldermen haven't seen it already. We did receive notification from Metro Electric. They are going to implement some service on Saturday. Again, I want to thank the aldermen, the residents, the community, the concerned people who did come up and show up to that meeting. It looks, and you know, that it did work. Again, from there to days, it would work after that, correct? So it's a, it's a, it's a victory for the commuters and for the residents of Blue Island. As we kept stressing, Blue Island is a commuter hub. Hopefully it'll expand. As we jokingly say, Blue Island's the center of the universe. All roads and all rail and all waterways lead to Blue Island. So let's continue doing that. And this is a good example that they listen downstate and everywhere. So again, congratulations to everyone on that. By chance, this past week, I was by White Castle, and they celebrated the 40th anniversary, and I should have brought her her name. But it was an employee who started her career in Blue Island at this castle, 13, and now she's in, she's in corporate in Columbus, Ohio. So she wanted to celebrate her 40th anniversary here in Blue Island, so they brought her back along with corporate people from White Castle and the others who are here. So I was privileged and fortunate enough to meet with them, and they send their regards to all of us here in Blue Island. They love Blue Island, and they want to continue servicing our beautiful city. So if you haven't seen this already, they've been striking Gregory. They've started striking Gregory and since, from 119th and Gregory Road up to the bridge. They will continue doing that. There has been some discussion, some movement on the Walgreens, but not much. Just as I informed the aldermen, we'd want your input regarding that. Wyreton Road, as you see this, they'll be starting very soon regarding the repainting of that stretch of from 127th going east. Alderman, Dexter Johnson, do you want to mention anything regarding your area? What happened yesterday?
Yes, sir. I had a, well, there was a coalition of people. We had a bookbag giveaway at a Posen School, I mean Gordon School that's in Posen, Illinois. We had hundreds of bookbags and supplies. I want to thank Next Level Generation, Salt and Light Ministry, Wilson and Associates, Will Davis, yourself, for all being part of this, to try to get these kids. The school is actually kindergarten through third grade, to try to give them a toolkit to start school. Some of those children are in low poverty areas, to try to give them a sharp start to school. We have the fathers bringing their kids to school on very first day at that same school, Gordon, Monday at 8:00. So if you guys, if anybody can be free to come down and help support, we really appreciate it. It's in a unique area. The school actually consists of Posen, Robbins, and Blue Island kids. So it's...
And Kitty Point, if you don't know, it's Kitty Point, to the Rec Center. From my understanding, the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts who are stationed there help prepare the bookbags.
Yeah, the parents, and the, I guess, then mothers, more or less to say, that was there.
And we also wanted to thank Mr. Bob Jackson, who's there also.
Yes, definitely.
With us yesterday. Okay. So let me move on to this. I don't see the fire chief here, but again, I know our director, Mr. Rita, sent a notice to Waldorf, should have received the notice, regarding the heroism that happened last week regarding the firefighters, firefighters who rescued a woman, third floor, from a six-unit apartment building on Wood Street, if I'm correct. Correct?
Correct.
And I would hope, and I know we will, make commendations to those firefighters in the very near future.
We are prepared, your honor.
Thank you very much. Again, that's a plus for everyone. I saw some of the police crews. They have arrived, or the new squad cars, or no?
Yes. The four new squad cars arrived yesterday afternoon. They now have to be outfitted with computers and lights and all that, but yes.
Okay, thank you. I was fortunate again, last week, saw 400-plus students or kids at Hart Park. And it was a Metro Principal at Veterans, and basically the whole entire student body in one day there in the afternoon. Again, welcoming back to school, the teachers, the counselors, etc. They were, they were great. To be amongst all of them, inspiring them for another progressive school year. And then on Sunday, I want to thank American Legion Post 50. They got a big event coming this weekend at Memorial Park, so we want to support them. They had a picnic honoring their members this past Sunday at Memorial Park. And the Meadows, hey, Chicago Soldiers, I thought that's the organization that had the fundraiser.
Yeah.
Honoring one soldier, and each year is a different soldier from the Chicago metro area. And they hosted it, how many years already at the Meadows?
This is the seventh year.
Seventh year. They could have gone anywhere else, but they decided always to come back to Blue Island. And they donated $23,000-plus to that soldier and his family. Again, very touching moment there. On a personal note, on a personal note, if you see me within the next week, starting on Thursday, with a gentleman in a wheelchair who almost looks like me, and a young lady, and a 15-year-old, it's my uncle from Mexico. He's back here in 50 years. He's my dad's last remaining brother out of eight. I have one other aunt, so out of eight, there's only two left. And unfortunately, it's like the last hurrah trip. And that's what we're considering as a family. This is the last hurrah. I don't think he'll make it after this. And the other reason that I mention this to all of you, if you see us, come up and welcome us. Welcome him. But I want you to welcome a 15-year-old. The 15-year-old is terminally ill, with leukemia. And that is really her final hurrah. And she wanted to come and visit my dad, who she hasn't met, hasn't seen in a long time. So they're arriving here Thursday. I picked them up from over here. So whatever you guys can do, if you see them around, both of them, please feel welcome. I'll invite all of you over to my parents' home. They don't hold this, but I'll invite all of you to come on over. We're planning to have cookouts almost every single night. They're here. And show them the hospitality and what people in Blue Island really mean. So again, if you see me there, feel free to stop by and time by my parents. That's all the business I have. Again, let me go back to the agenda. Bits, Mr. J.
Yes, we have, we have four bids recently. And the first one was Johnnie Reed, Johnnie Reed Rec Center. We have four bidders. Abbey Paving, Matthew Paving, Gallagher Asphalt, and Robert Shepherd. We also had Meadows Golf Station, Golf Station Upgrade. We had two bidders for that, Mikan Industries and Genco Industries. We had Canal Street, Rexford Street, Old Western Avenue Street Improvements, and Bike Path Construction Award from Gallagher Asphalt, Davis Concrete and Brothers Asphalt. We had three bidders for that one. We also had 135th Street Improvements, Maple to Old Western, and three bidders for that. Gallagher Asphalt Brothers Asphalt Reconstruction, Robinson Engineering took all these bids, took them back, and made recommendations to finance, which will be on the general finance.
All right, thank you. Yes?
Yes. Under Clark's business, we need a motion to approve a request from South and Alamo Club to help Hart Park on Sunday, September 30, 2017, from 10:30 p.m. until 6:30 p.m.
And, Walsh, Alderman. Rita, second, Alderman. Holly, any questions? Roco, please.
Holly, aye. Holly, aye. Farnwell.
Aye.
Farnwell, aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye. Vellato.
Aye.
Vellato, aye. Vieira.
Aye.
Vieira, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. 13 ayes.
Thank you.
That's it.
City treasurer?
Yes, Your Honor. I have, all the aldermen should have received the reconciliation statement on the bank dated July 31st, 2017. As all the aldermen should have noticed, that there is a change to myself, our consultant, Mr. Meyer, and Laurie, decided to change the way this has been set up. It's a little bit more easier to explain the restricted, with the non-restricted funds of the city of Blue Island. As we can see here, under the general fund, we only have $2,006,000. And on the bottom where it says the restricted funds, okay, it's all those. So at 2.6 million, $500,000 of that has got to be paid back by September 31st. Okay, there's very little money coming in the next few months until February or March. This is where cash on hand, and we usually go for a tax anticipation. So this gives you a more clearer picture of exactly what we have actually to deal with the general fund. Okay, and then there's also some other recommendations that were made, which I'm going to discuss with Mr. Meyer and Laurie, to make it a little more simple for everybody to understand this. Okay, does that, there's not any questions on this, like that motion?
Motion. Hi, anybody? Motion, Alderman Donahue, second, Alderman Farnwell. Any questions? Roco, please.
Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farnwell.
Aye.
Aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, no. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Johnson.
No.
Johnson, no. Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye. Vellato.
Aye.
Vellato, aye. Vieira.
Aye.
Vieira, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. 11 ayes and two ayes.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the other thing I want to mention is, I'm going to try to follow the broad rule order, which I'm asking the mayor, if he wishes me to answer Mr. Roscoe's comment, I will answer him. If not, we'll deal with it, it's not on the agenda.
No, we won't. Okay. Community Development Committee?
No, report, Your Honor. Our next meeting is on Thursday, September 7th, at 7:30 p.m.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Finance Committee?
Finance meeting was scheduled to occur August 15th at 7:00. Members present, Alderman Frosto, Holly, Farnwell, Thompson, Vieira, and Ossling. Also present was Treasurer Vellato, Deputy Finance Director Roy Brown, Director Rita, Commander Slattery, Dave Meyer, CPA of Blue Island, Eric Alvarez, Robinson Engineering Director, and President Dave Helsley. Public comment, Mr. Helsley commented on the website with the wrong date and time for the finance meeting. Under new business, Meadows Golf Club Lift Station Upgrade bids received on August 8th, 2017. This is coming out of the IFA bond, low bid to Mikan Industries for $186,200. Engineer's estimate was $204,000. Motion to accept the low bid by Alderman here involved, and second by Alderman Holly. Motion carried, and I make a motion to city council to accept.
Okay, a motion to have a second. Alderman Holly, any questions? Roco, please.
Holly, aye. Holly, aye. Farnwell.
Aye.
Farnwell, aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Thompson.
Upstain.
Upstain. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye. Vellato.
Aye.
Vellato, aye. Vieira.
Aye.
Vieira, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. 12 ayes, no ayes, and one motion. Thank you very much.
Canal Street, Rexford Street, and Old Western Avenue Improvement and Bike Path Construction bids received on August 11th. This is tip five, the low bid to Gallagher Asphalt for $522,299.17. Engineer's estimate was $600,910.17. Motion to accept low bid by Alderman Holly, second by Alderman Vieira. Motion carried. I'd like to make a motion to city council to accept.
Motion second, Alderman Vellato. Any questions? Roco.
Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farnwell.
Aye.
Farnwell, aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye. Vellato.
Aye.
Vellato, aye. Vieira.
Aye.
Vieira, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. 13 ayes.
Thank you.
135th Street Improvement, Bike Path, Old Western, this received on August 15th. This is tip two, low bid to Gallagher Asphalt, $337,777.17. Engineer's estimate was $312,902.50. Motion to accept low bid by Alderman Frosto, second by Alderman Thompson. Motion carried. Motion to city council to accept.
Motion second by Alderman Frosto. Any questions? Roco.
Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farnwell.
Aye.
Farnwell, aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye. Vellato.
Aye.
Vellato, aye. Vieira.
Aye.
Vieira, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. 13 ayes.
Thank you.
John Rita Recreation Center Parking Lot and Landscaping Improvement bids received on July 28th. This is in tip three, the low bid to Abbey Paving for $133,519.56. Engineer's estimate was $121,096.25. Motion to accept low bid by Alderman Frosto, second by Alderman Holly. Motion carried, and I make a motion to city council to accept.
We have a motion, second by Alderman Pittman. Any questions? Roco, please.
Question?
Alderman, a question. Alderman, go ahead.
Yes, sir. I was just wondering about the tip. Is some other things that's needed, I'm saying needed, that's in that area more than that part, like that's more, I guess, critical. I got two sinkholes on Sacramento, I mean California, around 139th, that's streets totally caved in those spots. Public Works came out, did what they could do. That street was actually initially paved over on sand. It was not even rock up under there. So what happened is, from their estimate, is that the 60-inch sewer pipe that goes down the middle of that street probably has a crack in it, and that each entry is sunken down, and they have done repair on it previously to keep it, I guess, stable. And it's just from them overweighted trucks that has, that came down, down that street, as well as Cooper's Grove, by the railroad tracks. I have spoken about this once before, about trying to put some weight limit tires for those, because Treasurer just stated that we don't have any finances, no money. So, you know, we could curb some of that if we could ticket some of those trucks. That scrap metal place that we helped out a couple of council meetings ago, said that we could use their scale. It's a lot of money in overweight trucks that we, we can take some of the stress off ourselves and the city, the residents, or whatever, by ticketing those trucks. They have torn up a whole corner, those big semis, because they can't make that corner, because it's not for them to make, it's for automobiles. The concrete, the sidewalks, I got pictures in my phone, if you guys would like to see, totally destroyed from those trucks. The street, Cooper's Grove, I would almost rank the moon as a better street to go over than to go down Cooper's Grove because of the patching. And I'm really thankful for Public Works to come out and make those patches. But I think there's some things that we could curb and probably utilize these finances for something a little bit better.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Is that, Roco?
Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farnwell.
Aye.
Farnwell, aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Thompson.
Upstain.
Thompson, upstain. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Johnson.
No.
Johnson, no. Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye. Vellato.
Aye.
Vellato, aye. Vieira.
Aye.
Vieira, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. 11 ayes, one, no, one motion.
Thank you.
The accounts payable for August 16th in the amount of $277,527.17. A motion to accept by Alderman Holly, second by Alderman Frosto. Motion carried, and I make a motion to city council to accept.
We have a motion, we have a second. Alderman Carr, any questions? Roco.
Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farnwell.
Aye.
Farnwell, aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye. Vellato.
Aye.
Vellato, aye. Vieira.
Aye.
Vieira, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. 13 ayes.
Thank you.
Payroll for August 11th in the amount of $359,124.24. Motion by Alderman Farnwell, second by Alderman Holly. Motion carried, and I make a motion to city council to accept.
We have a motion, we have a second. Alderman Vieira, any questions? Roco.
Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farnwell.
Aye.
Farnwell, aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye. Vellato.
Aye.
Vellato, aye. Vieira.
Aye.
Vieira, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Vieira, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. 13 ayes.
Thank you very much.
City revenue discussion given by Dave Meyer, CPA of the city of Blue Island. This is an ongoing discussion on the water and sewer rates, which should have been increased a long time ago. Projections on different levels were discussed by Mr. Meyer, advised on what increase would affect constituents and the city revenue. Further analysis is being done and will be reported at the next finance meeting. No further business. Meeting was adjourned. Motion by Alderman Frosto, second by Alderman Thompson, motion carried. Meeting adjourned at 15:15. Our next meeting is September 5th, 7:00 East Annex.
Thank you very much. Oliver, public safety committee?
Yes, Your Honor. The meeting was held on August 11th, called to order at 6:01. Present were Director John Rita, Chief James Klinker, Deputy Chief Michael Cornell, Commander Kevin Sisk, Commander Jason Slattery, Alderman George Pulis, Alderman Ken Pittman, and myself. Absent were Alderman Kevin Donahue and Alderman Dexter Johnson. Also attending the meeting were Treasurer Carmine Vellato, Alderman Jan Ossling, and Resident Janice Antonio. There is a motion to approve the minutes of the July 11th meeting by Alderman Pittman, second by Alderman Pulis. Motion carried. Resident Janice Antonio expressed her concerns about bedbugs at the Tresholds Facility, as she had seen discarded mattresses outside the facility that appeared to contain bedbugs. She was also concerned about the possibility of them housing recovering addicts. Director Rita said that her concerns would be addressed. Under Fire Department Business, the Fire Department has 319 calls in July, 200 were EMS calls. They responded to 29 general fire alarms and 11 minor fire alarms. They responded to 40 auto raid calls, most of which were from Calumet Park. They had 27 calls to man the station. They received two mutual aid response calls, both were fire calls. Medical reimbursement services for July was $31,929.90. False fire alarm fees collected in July were $240. During the month of July, the Fire Department was called out on one garage fire, one siding fire, one Robbins box alarm, two stove fires, one house fire, a house fire in Calumet Park, and one kitchen fire. Firefighter Patrick Smith resigned. New hire Joshua Johnson is being processed. The Fire Department participated in Community Day at Bethel Church The fire department participated in Community Day at Bethel Church on July fifteenth. The fire department attended retired Lieutenant Matthew O'Callahan's funeral. They participated in fill-in boot drive July twenty-eighth. And as a note, the final fill-in boot day is August twenty-fifth. They participated in the Access Community Health Fair on July twenty-ninth. And there will be a B I P F A fundraiser at the Thunderbolt Stadium on August twenty-fifth. Tickets are ten dollars each and for sale at the firehouse. If anybody wants to spend more money on tickets, I have about ten that I'm scouting. Under maintenance, engine twenty-one twenty-three was at Fire Service Incorporated for engine work. The fire department is awaiting the invoice. Fire prevention inspectors completed sixteen annual inspections. They are currently down to one inspector. Under training, the training division completed three hundred and thirty-six point one eight hours of training for the month of July. Firefighters Andrew Walsh and Richard Whitlock are enrolled in the fire inspection and co-enforcement class. Uh, we're still waiting word on the grants that have been applied for. And that's all for the fire department. Under police department, the patrol and detective divisions have worked hard this summer to keep crime down. To date, our officers took ten guns off the streets since the beginning of summer. The police department has been vigilant with stopping people and cars as a means to address gang crime activity that has been plaguing neighboring communities. The vigilance has paid off because serious crimes are down in Blue Island. The police department ordered four new cars. Um, I believe the cars have been picked up. And they will have newly designed police decal on the side and new equipment inside. The A E Ds have arrived and training will begin for all of the police department staff. There will be six patrol cars with A E Ds and one inside the station. In July, the police department answered two thousand six hundred and seventy-four calls for service, three hundred, including three hundred and sixty-eight business premise checks, seventy-eight of which were liquor establishment checks. Under stats and cases of interest, there was two residential burglaries and there were four hundred and twelve traffic stops. Commander Slattery noted the substantial increase in traffic stops in how that has contributed to the reduction of crime and the apprehension of criminals. Total money collected from the month of July was fifteen thousand, eighty-two dollars and twenty cents. The police department patrolled twelve thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight miles. There were twenty-four felony arrests and forty-eight misdemeanor arrests. Under cause of interest, on July twelfth, the police, the Blue Island Detective Division executed a search warrant in the one twenty-five hundred block of Highland after numerous complaints about drug and gang activity months earlier. Detectives began a covert investigation on the occupants of the residence and discovered that the people occupying the home were involved in narcotic sales and gang-related shootings in the area. The South Suburban Emergency Response Team was contacted to make entry due to the belief that there were weapons inside. In the early morning of July twelfth, the search team made a tumultuous forced entry into the residence. Three people were inside sleeping and they were taken into custody without incident. Once inside the house, detectives found two handguns, narcotic paraphernalia, a large quantity of cocaine, ammunition, and U S currency. The three occupants were interviewed. One occupant was charged with possession of cocaine with intent to deliver. One occupant was charged with unlawful use of a weapon by a felon. And one occupant was released without charges. The weapons have been sent to the lab to determine if the guns were used in other crimes. The detective division has used this arrest to investigate other gang-related incidents. Investigation continues. Under liquor establishment calls, there were two subject removals, two domestic incidents, and two fight calls in the month of July. Under training, Corporal Sepulsi and Corporal Rosal King attended a class on police supervisor liability at the East Hazel Crest Police Department. Corporal Sepulsi attended a class on user force workshop at East Hazel Crest. Officers Pedron and Stammer attended SERP training. Under community policing, Deputy Chief Cornell and Commander Jason Slattery and part title officers Wright and Murray attended the Community Day. Small giveaways were passed out to the children and Deputy Chief Cornell helped cook. National Light Out consisted of two walking parades to better serve the City of Blue Island residents. Both parades were successful and many people attended. The Blue Island Police Department gave away school supplies to the youth and met with many parents and children to discuss public safety and gang awareness. Under officer highlights, a citizen dropped her wallet at Thornton's gas station and the wallet was picked up by an unethical person who walked away. Officer Brian Holwell quickly recovered the victim's wallet and the contents from the offender. The victim sent a thank you letter to Sergeant Connors thanking Officer Holwell for doing such a great job. Also, Officer Strazl responded to a call of an unresponsive male at the bus stop near one hundred and twenty-ninth and Western. The person was breathing shallow and would not move. Officer Strazl removed a small bag of, or saw a small bag in the victim's mouth and apparent heroin overdose. Officer Strazl injected the victim with naloxone. The victim quickly came to and was transported to Metro South Hospital. Under the nine-one-one center, the nine-one-one center received seven thousand, eight hundred and ninety-nine calls in the month of July. The center has developed timelines for consolidation with the Cook County nine-one-one center and the Orland Fire Protection District. As a note, the intergovernmental agreement with the Cook County nine-one-one center required a minor change in the dates which will have no negative financial impact to the city. The city attorney determined that no further action is required by the city council. All employees that took the test for the Cook County nine-one-one center have passed the test. Monthly health and sanitation report, in the month of July, twenty-four health and sanitation inspections were done. All the businesses inspected were within state and local guidelines. There was a discussion of the resolution authorizing execution of memorandum of understanding between the City of Blue Island and the Cook County Sheriff for participation in the Cook County Sheriff's Prescription Takeback Program. The collection box will be placed in the lobby of the police department. Partial funding will be provided by M W R D. And the contract will be in effect for eighteen months from the date of signing. There is a motion by Alderman Poulis, second by Alderman Pittman. Motion carried. There is a motion to adjourn by Alderman Pittman, second by Alderman Poulis. Meeting was adjourned at six thirty-six. Our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, September the thirteenth at six P M.
Thank you very much. Alderman, go ahead.
June. Uh, these stats are put in at every meeting at some of the fire departments. They responded to forty auto aid calls. Most calls were from Calumet Park. Yes, what type of auto aid calls from the fire department to help with fire?
It's, it's not, um, it's automatic aid. It's not like aiding a car. If a fire department needs help from a surrounding fire department, they call in for help. Both of our calls for help come from Calumet Park. That's just a fire call.
Oh, so this is not auto call aid?
No, no, that's, it's not this.
Automatic?
Oliver, there's an agreement between all the surrounding suburbs that if they have a fire, we automatically respond to help them. If they have a fire, we, it's, it's an auto aid to a fire, a structure fire.
That's what, that's what it's called, auto. Automatic.
Automatic aid call.
That, that's what it is.
I'm asking the question because I'm wondering why would you, all the way?
No, that's, that's what it is. That's what it is.
And it assists us greatly being a part of that.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
So it's remember not to cut into the thing, but when they had the fire over here next to the Kangaroo Blue Kangaroo, that was an auto aid. I mean, you had equipment from Maridale Park, Orland, everywhere.
Yes.
So that's what it is.
Okay.
Automatic.
Thanks.
Anything else? If not, municipal services committee?
Uh, no report. And our next meeting will be September twenty-sixth at six P M in East Annex.
Thank you very much. Judiciary committee?
Our August meeting was canceled for lack of business and the next one is scheduled for Monday, September eleventh, six P M.
All right, thank you. Any other medical officer comments? Go ahead, Oliver.
Uh, thanks, your honor. Uh, on behalf of my colleague Oliver, Rita and I, we want to thank the Blue Island Fire Department for all the heroics last week, saving that woman on Wood Street, specifically Chief Klinker, Lieutenant Olson, firefighter John Duffy, firefighter Chris Adlington, firefighter Joe Pinnick, and firefighter Matt Suckus. So thank you for your heroism. I know we're going to give them a medal, but we appreciate all the help you do for the neighborhood. Uh, and also thank you, the Blue Island Police Department, for all your help with Santinatus. It was a very safe event and you were a large part of that. So thank you, Deputy Chief.
Thank you. Any other comments? Go ahead, Oliver.
Yeah, um, I just wanted to let the residents of the first ward going towards Thornton, um, going towards Thornton, rather, uh, with that, um, wooden trestle bridge, that that project probably won't be finished, uh, until like the first of the year. I had some residents complaining because they were stuck in the, stuck in between all those trains and the wooden trestle bridge being down. One family was stuck there for four and a half hours. One of the Aldermen's, uh, family members called me because they live over there and they were stuck. Just a blessing that it wasn't, you know, emergency because you guys couldn't have got in and they definitely couldn't have got out. If we could, you know, if we can, is there any way that, you know, as Alderman in each person's ward, if, if it's work being done or any improvements, if they could communicate that or we could communicate that a little bit better, um, as city officials and, you know, to the, to the residents. And, um, just want to thank, just want to thank you guys and appreciate, uh, John Rita for coming down this weekend. We had some discussions about improving, uh, different things and just open communication. I think that's what we need more of.
Thank you, Oliver. Go ahead.
Just to respond, um, the city was made aware when they were going to tear that bridge down, that toward Blue Island Road. We did go. We, we voiced Chief Klinker, uh, from the fire department, Deputy Chief Cornell, myself, met with, um, railroad, people that were doing that, uh, legal, all the lawyers started getting involved because we were extremely concerned about it. It, it, it completely stopped all of the traffic from going east or coming in from the east side and it was going to be a rather lengthy project till the end of the year. The problem being on the west end is, is, uh, at one hundred thirty-nine, one hundred thirty-six is where those trains go by and blocked both, both intersections. So, we were assured by the railroad people that as soon as they possibly could, they would make an emergency road or at least four emergency vehicles to be able to get into there. They gave us some numbers. It is far from ideal, but again, there wasn't, there wasn't a lot we could do on it. It was a railroad right of way and it really put us, uh, it, it, and I agree with you, Oliver, and at the time we were, and still are greatly concerned. Uh, that, that can be, it is very dangerous if something should happen where we can't get in or get people out.
Let me mention this and don't quote me on this, but I've heard rumors, the bar yard, Riverdale, C S X, where all the trains that go from the tracks closest to Memorial Park coming east, they laid off approximately half of the personnel. So whether that means less trains going in to Riverdale, coming through Blue Island, we'll have to wait and see. Uh, so again, that might be something, which you might say, call it a blessing or not. That's just for your information only regarding that. Any other comments? If not, let me add this, and I know she doesn't know that I'm going to mention this. My associate has a, uh, my assistant has a nephew who's in the Marines. Late last night, the family received a call from Captain Pendleton. He was involved in a very serious accident and Marisol's older sister, Magdalene, had a fly-out this morning. Might be paralyzed. We don't know. Uh, he was involved in a car accident on a motorcycle in, in San Diego. So keep him and their family in your prayers. Uh, he had just joined the Marines less than a couple of months ago doing basic boot camp. All gun hole, and then this happens late last night. So keep that whole family in your prayers. If not, uh, do you have a motion for adjournment? Motion, Alderman Pittman, do you have a second? Alderman, Fairwell, all in favor?
Aye.